All right, well, I guess it's 2:30 somewhere in the world, so we'll get started. And I imagine Mike probably knows who's going to lead the discussion.
Yeah, I at least know who to hand it off to.
Okay, so we'll get started.
Commissioners, as I'm sure you recall, we've had a conversation that started quite some time ago about the need to update and replace the emergency communication system countywide. And TUSA consultant was brought in and provided some recommendations and three different options and cost estimates that were pretty sizable. There's been an ongoing working group. Hannah Stanbaugh with the county has kind of taken the lead in terms of those interactions, looking at possibilities and cost-saving measures and alternatives, working with the consultant, working with others. And I can't say enough about how many stones have been turned over and how much due diligence has been done. And I'll turn it over to her to kind of walk you through what's been done so far and then where we're headed in terms of requests for proposals and trying to get some competitive pricing.
Absolutely. Well, thanks for having us here. This is a really good opportunity for us to update you on...
Because you're going to be on camera. You want the podium?
Maybe the building authority could invest in some wheels for that.
I think my house...
Some wheels, I think.
Yeah, my house gets faster. Yeah. Okay, so this is just a really good opportunity for us to update you on everything that we have done since the last time that we spoke and provided some numbers to you that were obviously a little bit on the shocking end. I know that we've had that discussion. So what we have done is we had an opportunity in the month of June to do some testing of the existing 800 megahertz radio system that is owned by the state of Kansas, or otherwise known as the K-6 system. It's already existing, there is towers, and as if you can recall from that needs assessment report, that was actually one of the options that was presented to us. So we really just kind of felt that it was our due diligence to test it and find out what it might possibly look like for us. And so we took out not only myself, but several of the first responders. Sheriff and I spent a day. I know that even Captain Forrester and Lieutenant Pruitt spent some time. Both Bernie and our new emergency management director, Michelle, has spent some time too, just going out and doing some testing on the system itself and utilizing some of the equipment that we had already existing. So what we had was just really very great results and kind of probably exceeded a lot of our expectations, especially in some of those areas that I know the sheriff has...I'm glad he's got four-wheel drive and I'm glad that he drove. We went into some very big remote areas in the county and several of those areas, our current radio system did not work, but with a close proximity to the state system, we were able to for it to work just fine. So then we actually were also given the opportunity to do some additional testing utilizing the state's asset that's called a Communication on Wheels, or the COW, which is basically a mobile radio tower. And what we had found is that just off of the existing state system is that we did run into some areas of problem with when it came to in-building coverage, which we kind of expected, especially the hospitals of the world, the schools, some of our large industrial buildings. We knew that we were going to have some difficulties with radio communications with that, but we have problems with radio communications in those buildings now, so it wasn't any type of a shocker. So we did set up that Communications on Wheels and did some additional testing again to just try to give us an idea as far as, well, if we did put a tower here, what might that look like for in-building coverage? And we had some pretty promising results off of that. So what we did was that we kind of engaged our consulting company, TUSA, and just kind of kept them in the loop as far as what we were doing as far as doing this testing. And then we did have them assist us with running some alternate numbers if we were looking at being a little bit creative, which was helpful. And so after further discussion on the administration side of the House, we did determine that we still want to move forward with a request for proposals and put this out as a competitive procurement process. We know that we are sitting in a very good spot in regards to some creative options when it comes to either joining on the McPherson side with their system that they are inputting or looking at doing some partnering with the state of Kansas. And then we also have some other vendors that are out there that are still interested in bidding on this particular project. So we do feel that our diligence that we have undertaken, that we know that the 800-megahertz system is the right way to move for the migration of a new radio system for Saline and Saline County, but how we do it, we just feel that being able to move on a competitive platform is the best thing. So we have been working with TUSA and between Wayne and myself and several other members of the 911 committee, we've spent a lot of time reviewing that request for proposal. I think we've gotten it okay?
Yeah, it looks pretty good.
I think we're pretty close. So what we wanted to just update you all on what we've done, allow for us to have some dialogue between the responders and the different 911 committee members as well as TUSA and myself. But I have gone in front of or have had a discussion with the county commissioners. And Saline County itself has been the ones that has agreed to be the lead in letting that RFP. We would act or our staff members would then work on an appropriate interlocal agreement, which we have seen happen in other counties. Probably another one that's close would be Riley County doing the same thing with the city of Manhattan and all those different responding agencies. As far as who takes care of what, how that works, and again, it's just something that staff's going to have to work on to be able to articulate appropriately in an agreement. And then we would utilize select members of our 911 advisory committee and some of those kind of subject matter experts to help us with taking part in the review process of going through those requests for proposals along with our consulting company, TUSA. And our final recommendation would come to both governing bodies. That's how we see it, but obviously we are certainly willing and open to any type of discussion or any type of questions that you guys might have in regards to that process. So Wayne, do you have anything that you're wanting to add?
The only thing that I would keep in mind is just because we do an RFP does not mean we're purchasing anything. All we're doing is going out and we're getting proposal prices from these vendors. We don't have to act on it, we don't have to say you're the chosen one, anything. We just want to know who's going to give us the best deal possible, the best bang for the dollar.
And at this point, we don't know if the best bang for our buck, so to speak, is going to be connecting to the state system or some sort of freestanding system or some partnership with like a neighboring county like McPherson, right?
Exactly.
I mean, we're leaving all that on the table for the responding people to evaluate.
We've got to be encouraging results with the exercise that Hannah described. In fact, you might, if you would, you might describe what state assets are already out there and what us getting on that system might take.
Sure. So currently, the state of Kansas, their K-6 system that has...we have no towers that are existing in Saline County, but we have towers on all four sides of us. So what that does is certainly helps us with that coverage. There is definitely the potential of utilizing some of these existing tower sites possibly in the future. Don't know yet. Again, that's part of that kind of creative interoperability piece of it that we are so desiring, but that also certainly is encouraging for the state. Obviously, their state headquarters for the highway patrol are right here. If we add any type of infrastructure on the state system, which can be done, other counties have done that, it certainly just helps to increase the level of coverage. The other thing that we kind of found encouraging is just the number of counties in Kansas that already belong to the state system. It's quite a few. So out of 105, I want to say there's like 68 that already belong to full-time on the state system. So that is encouraging to know that we wouldn't be the only ones that would be experiencing that. So there's...and then, of course, we do have the assets, like I explained, that we did the testing with that Communication on Wheels, or that COW, that is a mobile radio tower that if by chance we would have any type of infrastructure failure, we could call upon the state to have them be...to have that brought in. They've got two of them that are deployable across the state. It wouldn't cost us anything to utilize it if need be. On the McPherson side of the House, which was again was another one of our options, their infrastructure is currently being built out. And they have got a lot of infrastructure that's being built out on the kind of northern end of their county that would help with covering a lot of the southern end of our county. Again, their proposal may look a little bit different than what the state's is, but the way that we had built the request for proposal is to bid that standalone system because we do need that comparison between the different vendors, but with the emphasis that we are extremely interested more in a creative interoperable solution with already existing infrastructure.
You said we were lacking some coverage in like the hospitals and stuff. Can we take care of that if we were to look at the state with their system with new towers? Or is that what it would take or what would it take?
Yeah, we've had a lot of discussion on that because we do know that we've got several different buildings that we consider critical infrastructure, the hospital definitely being one of them, a lot of our private business and industry being another piece of this. We've got a list of those critical infrastructure buildings that is included with our request for proposals. And again, depending on what the vendor might be, their solution to fixing that, to ensure that we have communications, might be a little bit different. There's a couple of different avenues that can take place with it, whether it be simulcasting, whether it be bi-directional antennas, whether it be some type of signal booster. Don't know. Every vendor might have just something a little bit different. But that is going to be a very big part of that request for proposal is to make sure that those critical buildings are going to be covered.
I know you had mentioned, I think last time we spoke and referenced in here about the state system needing some upgrades. And obviously, is that happening right now? And then we will be connecting with an upgraded system instead of connecting with something that might be outdated and we'd have to redo everything in a few years? Is that what I'm kind of understanding?
Yeah, I think that's probably one of the really good things about an actual 800 system. And if I overspeak or don't say it correctly, I'm going to ask for our consultants to help with it.
Just keep it simple, keep it simple.
So yes, I mean, the state system has been existing for several years, but as far as it not being upgraded, it has been.
Okay.
As far as just keeping up with technology, the cyber part of it, all of that stuff has already been completed. When we start talking about maybe some capacity things, such as there's a...the 800 megahertz world, there's a phase one and phase two. The state is phase one. They are never going to go to phase two. That's just them. It comes down to funding, but that does not mean that we could not do some type of phase two compatibility or some type of phase two implementation here in our area to set us up for the future. And let's say maybe five years down the road that the state does end up wanting to go into phase two. The really good thing with all the technology that is out there and some of the standards too that the state is even putting forth is that if you buy a current or if you buy a radio right now, it has to be capable of phase two, it has to be capable of encryption.
Phase one, okay, okay.
So I think there's already some safeguards or some measures that are being put in place there on the state side of it that would allow us to not only upgrade our end of it, but then also be compatible with what they have existing.
In the future, okay.
The thing to remember, FCC is going to drive that phase two. They don't even have a plan. All they have is a discussion and say, put phase two, and that's as far as it got on the table, so.
And so I think some of our early concerns about the state system were being able to control our own destiny and whether they pass through rate increases or policy changes. But when we hear that over half of the counties are on the state system and starts to build some critical mass, that they're probably not going to be able to make drastic changes and not hear about it statewide in terms of whether that's fees or whatever, anything that's put in place, which is encouraging. The other thing I would tell you is that city legal councils reviewed the RFPs and provided feedback as well as county legal councils. So it's been gone through from the technical side as well as the legal side with the fine-toothed comb. And we didn't see anything of concern in terms of the city's approach to request for proposal approach. And just trying to keep everything competitive with TUSA's help, bidding it all rather than zeroing in on one probably helps. And I know Hannah is hesitant to speculate about numbers, but I think it's safe to say what we've seen on the state system, their tower locations, what it might be able to do for our system, at least gives us optimism that we might be able to see some significant cost savings. Do you want to go that far?
I think that's probably...I'm going to defer a little bit to these guys because they're a little bit of the experts on that end.
The one thing that I'll say to that, again, if you guys don't remember, Alan talking to, I can't present last time, the one concern that we have, and it's not a great one, is as Hannah was talking about the capacity, is if there's so many paths for communication on these other tower sites, making sure that the agreement that moves forward with the state continues to support all their needs plus your needs as well. But as price goes, yes, I mean, we may be cutting out a tower, one less tower, things like that. So there are pieces after discussions with the state, internal discussions, that could provide some high-level cost savings. What those exact dollar amounts are are going to be hard to tell until we get the proposals in place, but yes, there are definitely some items that have been identified that will provide definite cost savings. It's just making sure that the county and the city is protected so that way, should you choose to go down that path in the end, that you're not stuck in a bad position where again, you get some situation happen and the equipment you thought was going to work doesn't work, things like that. So just protecting you guys and making sure everything works, but it's been very promising, the discussions we've had, very passionate discussions, but good discussions, so.
Now, is the 800-megahertz system, is that a trunking system?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Do you have a number of RFPs you anticipate?
I can guarantee two, possibly three. Maybe four? Guarantee two.
And does that include the state option and the maybe merged option with McPherson?
Yeah, so that, again, that's kind of our anticipation is our...the way the request for proposals is written out is that specifically to bid a standalone system, but with emphasis that please give us another option that would be maybe a little bit more creative and then as far as either joining McPherson or joining the state or whatever the other vendor might come up with.
What it really boils down to is we have specific verbiage, and then again, city and county have both read over it. It specifically states that whatever option you provide as a creative option must still meet all these other technical requirements. And then you have to identify what those cost-saving options are. If it was standalone and it needed X, but now by joining the state, you don't need X, outline that, show us where that cost savings is at. But if you are not providing X because it's with the state, you have to still meet all the rest of the technical specifications within the system. So that allows you to get these creative options with first and state, and who knows what else may come, but still meeting the basic minimal technological requirements that are needed for the county and the city.
Will each proposal then have, I mean, be required to address possibly connecting with the state system and/or McPherson, or is that just an option? Could they just present like standalone?
They could.
And in fact, the primary proposal will be standalone. For this, as the RFP is currently structured, every respondent must provide a standalone proposal so that way we understand from our side and your guys' side what owning your own system would look like. Because there, as we talked about, there are some political gains to owning your own system, but it obviously comes down to budget concerns as well. So at least you will have a true apples-to-apples. If they want to play as part of this, I guess to say, they have to understand that they have to provide that full apples-to-apples comparison. However, if they are able to provide some unique option, in this case, the state, Motorola is the only vendor that can connect to the state, join their core that way. McPherson can only be Harris because it is a Harris system. So if they want to be involved with this RFP process, they all have to at least do that standalone and then provide their unique options as it may come.
So we would probably be expecting a proposal from like Motorola and then Harris?
And the third one we expect could be is a company called EF Johnson/Kenwood. That is the other third major vendor in this industry.
If the state, for whatever reason, was going to upgrade its system, do the counties that share it pay proportional part of that or the state just increase its fees?
The state, there is no fees whatsoever, but joining the state, absolutely no.
Hardware costs.
Yeah, the hardware cost piece of it. But as far as like any type of fees or fees, like say you've got 10 radios on it, you pay us $100 a month. They don't have any of those and they don't anticipate to ever have those. The thing with if the state would come and say that they are going to be upgrading, I think that's a little bit of discussion that we're going to have to have with the state as far as what those expectations might be. I actually sit on the State Interoperability Advisory Council myself, and actually Chief Pearson sit on that, where we not only talk about just the radio side of the House with the state. We've had some conversations that have been pretty encouraging in the aspect of if they do anticipate doing any type of upgrades, they want to be able to provide the member counties or those counties that are on the state system plenty of time. They're in the process right now of updating their template or the way that the radio channels are set out and fully well knowing that they probably won't complete that with every single radio that has access to the state system in probably 10 years, but starting that process now. So and there's...this particular committee is helping to work on some of those standards as far as what everybody has to have in order to be associated or even be on the state system. So I think that we would be able to get plenty of warning appropriately if they were planning on doing a particular upgrade that would affect us and our need to possibly buy additional hardware or software.
That, and I think it's a very hard sell to believe that the state's going to come after the counties that are on the system and say it's going to cost you X amount of dollars. We as taxpayers already paid for the state system once, so you're doing a double dip on us if you're going to try to do that, plus other counties and regions give up their homeland security money to help pay for this system also. Hannah, can I speak on this?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
So another item there, you'll...as you get into the proposals from Motorola for the state, you'll hear a term called an SUA. The SUA, pretty much all the counties that join, it says software upgrade agreement. And so what that is, is to join the system, there is dollar amounts, and that was actually included in our original budgetary numbers that the...remember, we talked about there's a 15-year plan. Part of that 15-year plan is that regular payment to whoever the vendor is, Motorola or whatever, to make sure that those upgrades are paid for. So that number through the negotiation would already be included. We as TUSA would not feel comfortable for you to sign off on a system without having those upgrade costs already accounted for. So when you get that final 15-year number and it's part of the RFP as it stands today, they will have to provide you with that total cost to upgrade it at no additional cost beyond what's in the RFP for that 15-year lifecycle. So you'll know, once this RFP comes, whether it be the creative option, standalone, whatever is decided, that should include those numbers for the full 15 years to do the software operation. If the state decides to upgrade, you guys can stay lockstep with them because that's already calculated in your RFP.
That's a good point, thank you.
So Hannah, without going into numbers, are you going to speak to kind of the allocation responsibility for hardware, city, county, fire district?
Yeah, so what we've kind of talked about is, and I think this is probably just going to take a little bit more conversation on, there's the infrastructure piece, there's the maintenance piece, and then there's the individual radios. What we have discussed amongst our 911 committees and just even planning for this appropriately is that each agency is going to be responsible for the cost of their own radios. Our fire districts, we have six of them, each one of them have already started putting money aside in their budgets to be able to obtain their costs associated with it. Of course, the police department, fire department, emergency management, sheriff's office, all of us will have our individual costs for those radios that we'll have to account for. And there's the infrastructure piece of it. So the infrastructure is your...the towers, the shelters, the antennas, the microwave connectivities and all of that. I think we'll have to have a little bit of a discussion as just as far as how the design points out, is the county going to cover the cost of the infrastructure and then ask for, you know, the city to cover the cost of their radios and the 911 dispatch center? Or is the city going to help us with some of the costs of the infrastructure? Because if we're upgrading a tower site that is specifically going to benefit not only benefit majority of the city users, we don't know exactly how that might look, but what we've kind of talked around and talked about is county looking at the infrastructure piece of it, city being able to cover the 911 dispatch center and the radios for the city agencies. And then, of course, each of the other entities would be responsible for the cost of their radios too. There is some different creative financing solutions that are out there, especially for the rural fire districts and for cities and counties when it comes to radio infrastructure. And we are not the only ones that have gone through this. So I have several different examples and seen several different ways that people have sliced and diced the way that things are split up cost-wise. And then there's the maintenance side of the House. And again, as Alan had said, our plan is to do this over 15 years. What are those maintenance costs going to look like? And how do we particular...or how do we look at that from not...we can't finance the maintenance piece of it, so do we look at either CIP allocations, however that might work to be able to cover the cost of maintenance for the next 15 years of the lifespan of this particular radio system?
When you send out the RFPs, how long do they have to get back with us and then...
Do we think 30 days or do we see 60?
You guys tell us. I mean, I think we're...we kind of settle, I think around 16. Just simply the fact is that there's a lot of technical stuff has to go in and due diligence they have to do. We'd like to have a pre-proposal meeting so that way we can talk with them and make sure they truly understand the scope of what's being asked of them. So that takes time to schedule and set up. I don't think even 60 days is unrealistic. Generally, we give 60 to 90 days, but I think 60 is a fair number for us to start at. They may vocalize their displeasure with that, but that's fine, that's on them.
And then how long will their quote be good for? Because thinking on our end, how we're going to finance it and stuff, are those quotes good for 30, 60 days?
Again, we can put whatever you want it to put in there. We have often said that they must be good for six months or longer. So now that may affect how they want to put their risk dollars in there, but it's not outside the realm of possibility for us to say this must be good for a six-month period for you guys to decide how you want to move forward with it. So certainly, and again, as Wayne alluded to, even if we were to say the RFP came and no decisions made even longer than six months, yes, there may be some percentage of price that changes, but there's a good ballpark estimate that you're going to get from that where it's only, say, inflation or something that may change that price number. So but I'd say six months is fair to do this. I mean, I don't think...I think six months is pretty fair.
I think that's what we have discussed, is having them be valid for six months and being respectful of the city and the county's budget cycle. That would give us a really good idea once we have some hard, solid numbers and be able to...I mean, I know that both our entities have put some money away either in CIP or some allocation in 2020 in anticipation of this, but allows us to really refine that kind of budget season 2021.
Can I add one other point to this?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
There's only generally one to two radio systems per county, and for these vendors, this is a very rare opportunity for them to win your business. And so they are generally very flexible and very willing to work on, you know, flexible financing, all these things, because frankly, this is going to be a once-in-15-year shot that they get to earn your business. So they are more than often willing to be very, very flexible in how they work with you guys, and there's only so many counties and radio systems in this state, so.
So the state have any towers actually in the city limits?
No. Well, let me rephrase that. Yes, they do. Whether or not they're being utilized, that's another question.
It's not actually on the state system. There is a physical tower that the state owns sitting there, but it's not part of that statewide radio system currently.
So if you use some of these city towers, they would then be incorporated into the state network?
Yes. And that's part of that creative solution is that utilization of existing infrastructure. I mean, obviously, when we start talking about building new shelters and new towers, we're talking about land acquisition, we're talking...I mean, it's a big undertaking. So that's what is really attractive about what is already there, whether it be McPherson County or whether it be the state is utilizing that stuff that's already there. Fully well knowing a tower and a shelter are going to last far longer than 15 years. I mean, you're talking 50, 75-year infrastructure there, so why not be able to repurpose that and utilize it the way that we would need to?
Whether we do standalone, the state or McPherson's going to depend...that'll set how many towers we need in the county and so on and so forth.
Correct.
The one thing I'll say though is that Harris and their local shop, KCOM, they have towers in this area as well. So we're pretty confident between discussions Hannah, Wayne, and I've had that, they'll try to be creative in that option as well for you guys. But yes, to answer your question, that will dictate standalone, you'll have to cover everything on your own versus if you join McPherson and the state, there may be the existing towers that can fill in some of those gaps.
Question, I guess this might be for legal counsel, is how long do we anticipate if we have to go out and get agreements for towers on different places?
Well, from recent experience, it really depends on the property owner.
Can I also add a quick thing to that? So one of my other projects is Riley County, Kansas, who Hannah knows very well, Pat Collins, the emergency management director there, who's actually building all new tower sites. He had some tower sites that took him six months to acquire, and he's had one tower site now that's going on a year and a half to acquire. So it's, again, it has to do with are they in trusts, are they privately owned? There's lots of different things. And on top of that, with each tower site, we have to do FAA approvals, we have to do state historical society proposals, if there's any historical grounds there, things like that. So there's a lot of pieces that play into it as well, once the land is acquired to even get the tower approved.
Timeline going forward, Hannah, as far as distributing the RFPs?
So we are extremely close on the RFP. I think that we can probably have it ready in the next...what do you think?
I'd say we really wanted it.
Okay, yep. We are...I mean, we have got it right there, ready to go. Again, we would have it released and have it open for a period of 60 days. It would probably take us a good month to grade them when they come back and be able to make a final recommendation back to the governing bodies. So my anticipation would be about the first of the year. to the governing bodies. So my anticipation would be the first of the year. So we were hoping to be a little bit further along in this. We were hoping that we would have already had the RFPs back by then, but I think we have done absolutely everything that we could possibly have done. And I think it was really encouraging being able to have some of our responders actually go out and physically test the 800 system to make sure that that was the right thing to do. And I think all of the results and all the comments that I got back from several of the different entities is they were extremely pleased with what, what it could do, and especially do for us. So we're looking forward to it, but we are ready to get this ball rolling, to say the least.
So commissioners, the reason I wanted to have a study session, conversation, is in part to give you the opportunity to get any questions answered, but also make you aware of where the process was headed, so that if Hannah and the county distributed RFPs, that didn't come as a surprise to you. I don't know that there's anything needed from us at this point. We're just kind of moving forward. As a group, a lot of work has been done, and we're kind of finding the form. Once the RFPs are out, we get responses, that's when the agreement that Hannah described, and some of those decisions will have to be made. As Wayne indicated, nothing's binding at this point. We're just hopeful that we're keeping it as, as open and competitive as possible. And I can't say enough for the work that's been done behind the scenes to really get down to the technical details and not just kind of take it at face value and the price is what it is. They've done quite a bit of work trying to find options and save, save dollars where they can.
On the maintenance piece, just tell me if I'm hearing this correctly, they're going to give us a figure that we can then prorate over that 15 years. We don't, that's not being paid upfront, but they're estimating it now going forward, so.
Is that pretty typical, what you see?
That seems like a crystal ball kind of guess.
Yeah. Well, in fact, so they'll probably add some risk dollars in there, as they tend to do, but we actually require them to lock that price in as part of that contract. So it's not that it's a guess on your part, it's that they must agree that that contractual price number is good for every year. And something I wanted to go back on, you talked about earlier, not to debate too much publicly in a forum like this, but that we have seen sometimes even that's amortized within the system, to say that whatever that total 15-year price is, to then take that, divide it by 15 total, and pay the maintenance with it as well. Now, it's less common, a lot of times people do want to pay their maintenance as they go along, you're right about that. But I will say that it is an option to amortize the whole 15-year package and just pay one monthly rate. You'll generally pay higher for that, because they're wanting to get their, their dollars upfront as much as possible, as you guys are well aware. But I'm just saying that option does exist, and we have seen it done. But yes, to your point, sir, that they'll be written in the contract, they have to spell it out, years 1 through 5, 6 through 10, 11 through 15, what those dollar amounts are going to look like.
At the end of the day, we want you to know what it's going to cost, because it's a 15-year marriage. So we want you to know everything it's going to cost before you sign the dotted line on any contract. So you'll have all that information in advance.
I don't think you can use that word marriage in there, because after 15 years.
Partnership, partnership. We, we, we did the same thing with Tyler, with, with ORCAD, our vendor and everything. We did a 60-month last time on that. Jack Ross sat in on that, and so we're, I think we're three years into that one, so we've got two more years before we have to do that maintenance contract again. This is a very, very tough negotiation with those companies, trying to reduce those fees.
So I may be misunderstanding your question, but I think there's probably, help to clarify what maintenance is covered at that fixed rate versus something breaks down and represents an added cost.
Yes. So really, the only thing, everything that is an infrastructure item, the antennas, the transmitters, those are going to be, the things up on the tower that can get struck by lightning, things like that, those are going to be probably some of the few key pieces that we'd look at insurance for covering, because a lot of times, the vendors aren't going to cover acts of God. But we even, in this example with McPherson, we talk about floodplains inside there. And we had, we had to work through that vendor, they were going to put the building on the ground, and we had the local data that it was within the 100-year floodplain study. And we forced them per the contract, because it was verbal, it was written out of the contract, that they had to lift it up over so many feet to get it out of the floodplain. So things like that, that we try to be very diligent about our details on, to remove as many acts of God as possible from, from causing a problem. But there are going to be a few things, but I would say that it's generally things like lightning and whatnot that, that remove things from being covered under the maintenance. Otherwise, all the transmitters, all the equipment, and even if you want to go down that road, the subscribers themselves can have warranties included as part of this pricing as well. So there's really not a whole lot that could be removed. HVAC, the buildings themselves, the actual structure itself can be covered under maintenance. Right now, we have pretty much everything in the RFP covered under maintenance that we're moving forward right now.
That's software, that's hardware, that's, that's everything. So, you know.
Oh, well, you know, to that point, I'm sorry, one other quick thing. People talk about with this being an IT system, that after a few years, everything's obsolete. We include the hardware and the software upgrades, that SUA I was mentioning earlier. So that way, if the new software comes and it requires a hardware update to work on that software, they must do that as the cost built into this RFP as well. There's no additional cost on top of that to cover replacing a server or a computer or some item that can then handle that new software.
Because we all know that Windows 11 or Windows 12 are going to come at some point in time.
Yes, exactly.
Probably within the next five, so, yeah.
Does that answer your question, sir?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So how do we look, how are we financially positioned to be able to respond if, you know, the RFP goes out, say, about the first of November, and then they, we'd be looking at, making a selection in February, maybe?
I'm sorry, are you looking at me or Hannah?
I'm looking at you.
I thought so.
I can look at that.
We, we try to anticipate what our share would be and factor that into the mill rate that we set for 2020. So we're optimistic that with everything that's been done, the RFP should come in and hopefully it's affordable and make it all work.
Yeah, I think when we ran some, some initial numbers, just trying to be creative on our own, I mean, it looked really good if we broke down it from the county taking the infrastructure, and then each individual agency taking their radios, and then the city taking the 911 dispatch center. But Mike and I had a conversation, he goes, well, the infrastructure costs, like it went down on the county side, but the radios price didn't change with the city. And again, I think there's, there's some more discussions that we have to have when it comes to starting to pay for it. But I know that the county has done the arduous diligence in the aspect of looking at the budget itself and, and trying to set aside some of that money, so we would have some money upfront, as the city has done to, to begin this project in 2020, but then have some hard numbers for 2021 and moving forward in our budget cycles.
And given the population that it serves, I think the hardware being a county project is equitable across the tax base. And as you may already know, we, we take on dispatching services, not just for the city, but the county as part of kind of our internal local agreements about the J O and dispatching. So that seems to be consistent with the approach we've taken in the past. And certainly, in my estimation, makes more sense than a city taxpayer paying a tax levy to two entities for towers and infrastructure across the county.
And that's the way we've looked at it from, or looking and doing research with what other counties have done. That's just what we have typically seen. The county takes the lead in quite a bit of things with cooperation from those individual municipalities. And it seems to work for them, so have great hope and anticipation. It'll definitely work for us.
All right. I don't know that we knew how much time to anticipate.
We're going to Sonic, guys.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
And thanks to the 911 committee that's done so much work on this. Really appreciate all your work.
We had fun testing. It was a good time.
It was a good time, good team.
And there was a light beam.
I just want you guys to know that we are very passionate about this.
I guess we have till 3:45.
Oh, yeah, you guys are going to have ice cream now.
Welcome back at 3:45.